...two thousand and nineteen, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, let the roll call show everyone who's present. At this time, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
I'll move the minutes.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the bills?
I had one.
Councilmember Kibble?
The invoice general ledger distribution list, there's costing for Dixon, Dixon Engineering for the water tower. I was wondering, was that something that hadn't been paid earlier?
That's correct.
Okay. I mean, was that the...
That was the original bill. We just received that bill, so we are paying that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
I'll move the bills.
Second?
I'm going to be refusing myself because there's purchase from Michigan Cat. My wife works there. Unless anybody objects.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of this evening's agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda for the night.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? At this time, if anyone wishes to remove any item from the consent agenda... Okay. Paul, is that... Oh, Councilmember Kurtz.
Just a point of parliamentarian procedure. If an individual does decide to remove an item off of the consent agenda, where on the agenda are you going to place it?
I'm talking with our city manager, Paul.
It would be the next item under new business, after the number two on new business.
Okay. Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
I just have a question. Under the resignation of Ms. Robinson, the effective date?
Mm-hmm.
This is August fourth, 2018. Is that correct?
That is correct, and we just received that document. That's why it is so late.
All right.
Even though it does show that prior date. I apologize.
No problem.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent, both items, under the consent agenda.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. At this time this evening, we have a proclamation for Mrs. Kay Veritan. Do we have any of her family members here this evening? Oh, thank you for coming out. I'm actually going to read this verbatim. Kay celebrated her hundred and fifth birthday back on January twenty-sixth, and it was quite an event. Whereas Kay Veritan will be honored by friends and relatives on the occasion of her hundred and fifth birthday on January twenty-sixth, 2019. She was born in Chicago, Illinois, on January twenty-fifth, 1914, and has been a resident of the City of South Lyon for the past year. During a long and productive lifetime, she has demonstrated in countless ways her dedication to the welfare and others, of others, and has earned the respect and affection of people from all walks of life and all ages. Kay proudly served her country as a member of the Women's Army Corps in World War II and was stationed at the Pentagon. She is also a new member of the South Lyon VFW. She has lived during the most eventful century of this world's history and in her quiet way has been a force for good and a stabilizing influence on those around her during turbulent years. Therefore, I, Daniel Al Pelchat, Mayor of the City of South Lyon, do hereby deem it an honor and pleasure to extend this certificate of recognition to Kay Verterian and her, on the occasion of her hundred and fifth birthday, with sincere congratulations and best wishes for many more productive years. So, thank you for being here tonight, and it was an incredible event.
I think that's worth a nice clap.
Now, we got some more good news. At this point, we would like to do introductions for our new police officers and their new positions this evening. Chief, do you have an order that you'd like to go in?
It's up to you. No. No preference.
Well, we will start this evening with our new police chief, Christopher J. Sovick. Chris graduated from the Oakland Police Academy in 1991 and was hired by the South Lyon Police Department in November of that year. He and another officer structured the formalized field training program that is currently being utilized to train and document the progress of new officers today. Chris was promoted to the rank of sergeant in February of 1997. In 2011, he obtained his master's degree in criminal justice administration. In 2012, Chris attended the 248th session of the FBI National Academy, where he received specialized training in leadership, media relations, word statement analysis, and verbal, nonverbal behaviors and communication. He was promoted to the rank of lieutenant in April of 2013 and was responsible for the day-to-day operations of the department. Chris attended Michigan Association Chiefs of Police, New Chiefs, and Executive School in 2017. He has played an important role in preparing the police department's budgets and annual reports over the last five years. Chris served as lieutenant until his appointment as chief of police in January. Congratulations, chief. Up next, we are honoring Doug Baki. Doug graduated from the Washtenaw Police Academy in December of 1990, when he was hired by South Lyon as a part-time officer. He has also worked part-time as an EMT for Huron Valley Ambulance, in addition to working at the police department. When Doug returned to enforce the laws in the area where he grew up, it seemed as though every time an officer pulled over a person in their mid to late twenties, the question heard by the other officers was, "Is Baki working? He's a good friend of mine." Thankfully, Doug was able to overcome those challenges rather quickly. He was promoted to a full-time position in July of 1993, where he served as one of the department's field training officers. He was promoted to the rank of sergeant in 1999, where he has received several certifications in areas such as firearms, instruction, use of force, taser and chemical spray, Glock pistol and rifle armor, and ALIS active shooter response, among others. Doug has served as the department's liaison for the Citizens Police Academy since 2013 and taught the use-of-force instruction material to the class of 1999. For the past five years, Doug has been responsible for reviewing every use-of-force report incident to ensure the proper department procedures were followed. Doug was recently promoted to the rank of lieutenant in January, and the department is privileged to have him serve in that capacity. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Lieutenant.
Thank you. Rip. Thanks.
Next up, we will honor Michael Witrock. Michael joined the South Lyon Police Department in January of 2002. Prior to joining South Lyon, he was a paid-on-call firefighter at Northville Township Fire Department from 1996 to 1998, where he received his Fire One and Two certifications. Since joining the police department, Mike has served in the Patrol Division, Detective Bureau, and Traffic Enforcement Division. Michael possesses a Bachelor of Science in organizational leadership and management from Regent University, 2005, and a Master of Business Administration from Madonna University in general business from 2012. He was the president of the South Lyon Police Officers Association from 2009 to 2017. His nickname is Witty because of his quick wit and ability to make people laugh. Mike recently attended a three-day leadership seminar for frontline supervisors, and the department is expecting great things from Mike as he transitions to his new leadership role. Congratulations, Mike. Please remember to state your name and address. Okay. We will close the public comment and move on to our discussion of downtown this evening. Mr. Donahue, how are you?
Hello there. Good to see everybody again. Briefly, a couple items, and then we'll go. I have a presentation, which there are copies in front of you, just good things that happened downtown last year. Thought the public would like to see the things that some of you saw in the annual report.
Bob, let me see if I can get this.
Okay.
Chases everybody out.
Go ahead.
It's a tough act to follow up, Bob. Better be good.
I do get along with law enforcement, though. I don't have any issues. This is always such an easy task.
They can't tell if it's actually turned on.
It doesn't look like it.
Steve, get on his shoulders.
More than that.
There should be an indicator light that you can see, you know?
Every other time I need to turn it on for someone else, I can get it to work. All right, Bob, we might have to just go without...
That's okay.
Sorry.
We'll go verbal, and you have the privilege of seeing some slides. I apologize. Well, let's do a quick update, and then we'll go to those good things. Of course, we're still in the stages of putting together the draft DDA budget. Actually, the DDA approved their draft budget with just some minor tweaking to go at their meeting last Thursday, at their Goals Board and Goals and Objectives meeting. We prepared a new orientation book for all DDA board members, new board members, as well as all the existing board members, and with a lot of information, with all aspects of their job, bylaws, and best practices for downtown. We have the lease signed for 115 East Lake Street. It's the former quilt shop. They've been in. They have their, they've come in for their building permit. It's where they will have kitchen accessories, pots and pans, cookbooks, all those types of things, and then kitchen, actually, classes, demonstration classes in the back for cooking. And they, in fact, they hope to have a counter pending with approval from Oakland County Health Department for French baked goods, a small area baked off-site. And they hope to open up in March, by the end of March. We've had some talks going on that are with antique shops. I was just out in Holly yesterday, or last Friday, talking to someone who's very interested in a couple women's clothing stores that really want to be in town. So, we have another opening. I don't want to mention it because I haven't verified the opening, but it looks like we'll have another space available, which is one of the beauty salons appears to be possibly leaving. Making way for a retailer would be great. So, the presentation that's in your slides here. This is actually, the mayor came to me about a month ago and said, "Why don't we give the public kind of a snapshot on what was in the..." Oh, almost. On what was in the annual report. Every year, the Downtown Development Authority in most communities gets an annual report from the director. It's given to the DDA board. It's also given to the municipality that the Downtown Development Authorities are in. So, we adopted the management philosophy when I was hired, when this position was hired, as the whole purpose is comprehensive management of downtown. So, we embrace what's called the National Main Street Program, and it's broken down into four areas. So, the good things that happened last year, we're trying to use that format. So, under organization, of course, we owe our downtown management to the city and the Downtown Development Authority in partnership. We have a great staff that supports the Downtown Development Authority Director, which is myself, and the staff at City Hall is fantastic. I've worked with several cities when I was at Oakland County, and our staff ranks with absolutely the top of the top anywhere in Oakland County when we come to community service and dealing with the public. The other partnerships that we utilize for information for downtown is the, if you were to Google some of these, anybody interested, Main Street Oakland County. It's a program that I developed when I was at the county. It's a countywide program that uses the National Main Street Program. There's also the Michigan Downtown Association, which I'm on the board. I've been on that board for 38 years. I must be insane. The next longest-serving person is 12 years. Paul served on that board for a number of years. Also, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and the Michigan Historic Preservation Network are good partners that we use. We've had great successes in the design of downtown. Design takes into consideration of how people interact and move around downtown, so some small items related to that, the new pedestrian signs went up, the pedestrian crosswalks, the DDA paid for those. They were approved by the Road Commission of Oakland County and the police chief at the time, and so those went out in the summer. They've been a big hit with all the snow. They're in, and they'll be back out when the weather permits. We found out that a lot of little things can make a big difference, and we noticed we had a lot of positive comments that the flowers, all the private businesses' flowers seemed to be at their peak last year. We'd really like to compliment the Corner Cafe, Bifano Eye Care, Presbyterian Church, and a lot of other private businesses. We need to do a better job of maintaining our DDA flowers, and we found out that it was a matter of constant watering and the right kind of fertilizer. So, our light poles, hanging baskets, we're looking for an improvement there in the flowers, but we think flowers are a big part of downtown. The expansion of the farmer's market was a plus downtown. We also resurfaced, not resurfaced, we sealed and striped the parking lots, the veterans and the farmer's market lots that hadn't been done in about four or five years. And those little things can make a big difference. People have noticed that. Building rehabs under design, we're starting to understand what historic preservation means. We're kind of in our third year of trying to really understand the three types of historic designation, and the business owners are getting comfortable with it and destroying some myths. We don't want a local historic district because that is something that has a lot of restriction, and I think you have to feel real comfortable with being on the state register of historic sites and the national register of historic places. Those are honorary designations. There are no restrictions unless you use incentives. So, the local with a separate historic district commission is something down the road, if ever. I think we can go a long way with incentives and just people understanding the importance of our historic buildings. So, we've made great gains. The evidence of that is 115 and 117 North Lafayette. That is the Venue and Exquisite Kitchen building when the 1970s-era mansard was stripped off. We found the 1930s storefront, which is now Venue, and the building owner wanted to keep that 1930s storefront because we want the evolution of architecture to show downtown. And then, what they found where the Exquisite Kitchens is now is really a comburation of a lot of work that didn't even meet code. The date of it was in the late 50s and 1960s, and there had been a lot of alteration before they put the mansard on. So, they went with the 1950s, 60s era, and so a revival of 50s, 60s architecture is what we now call mid-century modern, really big in home decor. So, we have a beautiful mid-century modern building at 117 and the 1930s facade restored, very simple, at 115, and that's through the efforts of Ron Borgman, combined of purchase and restoration, about over $600,000. That's quite an investment in our town. Then, we move to East Lake Street. The three buildings that are owned by Richard Rowe, two of those three are the Lake Street Tavern, and then one is the Taekwondo operation right now with apartments above all three. The left side of the Lake Street Tavern, the first of the three buildings, was completely restored to its original look, and then all of the windows in all three buildings were completely restored. The cornices were repaired to their original condition, and a brand-new cornice was put on 125 to match its original. And what was going to be about a $35,000 job turned out to be a $165,000 job, and Mr. Rowe was committed to it, excited about it, used an excellent architect, and our community has that history back for the future, so it's a great job. So, he deserve, he deserves a big round of credit. He will get that credit. Like 115, 117, we had a big deal. We had a ribbon cutting last November for the North Lafayette buildings. So, the East Lake buildings, after they get their three-part Victorian paint scheme late spring or summer, then the project will be completed. That's another $12,000, $15,000. And we'll celebrate those three buildings' preservation when that project is done. Another big plus when we're talking about design efforts, it's our new partnership for public art with the Cultural Arts Commission and the DDA. And what this is really, it's, we'll see our first evidence of it, we hope, in April with the unveiling of our first public sculpture. The Cultural Arts is working on that. That's their hoped-for unveiling with the public sculpture downtown. But it's also going to include public art shows. We've identified areas for murals. We'll have to talk to the Planning Commission about that. DIA outdoor art displays, architectural history awareness, sidewalk chalk art contests, and also the humanities, getting into poetry readings in different businesses, not just restaurants. So, it's quite an undertaking with our public art really stepping up, and we're excited to form that partnership. It's great. With business investment and reinvestment, of course, this is kind of a citywide, but the strength of our industrial base also certainly is a positive for our residents and for downtown. Michigan Seamless Tubeless, Seamless Tube, rather, had a very good year in 2018, and when Paul and I visited last November, they do have plans. They're on hold now, but they do have plans. They definitely need to expand in the future, and when they get the proper funding available through their parent company, they'll do that. There's no date yet of when that expansion will take place. The company's very sound, and they're excited. So, a quick recap on business investment. Throughout the DDA, we had $1,400,000 of new construction, which was basically the completion of the hotel, which it didn't get its occupancy permit until about a year ago. We had 10 building rehabs in the DDA, which totaled another $801,000. We had building rehabs outside of the DDA, $1,556,000. So, our business investment, which we've been tracking now for the third year, last year alone was just $3,757,000. In addition to that, we had building sales. We had four sales in the DDA, which totaled $1,734,000, $35,000, with the average price of about $400,000 in those four buildings. And then, new retail are, we have about three new retailers that are working on coming in. The definite with the lease sign, of course, is the quilt, the former quilt shop, which is the new cooking school and kitchen accessories, which, as of today, still doesn't have a name. They'll figure that out. Building Department's been great, working with them, our new city manager, and everybody's pulled hard to get all the details going. For promotions and marketing, our businesses have reported great years. The Lemon Tree owner, Annie Butchtrup owner, who's also on our DDA, reported that they had their highest monthly sales ever in December for their first two years of business. She attributed to some of the advertising programs and the more general awareness of downtown. Some of those advertising that we've done this past year were to be on the cover of Lyon Today, the New Business Directory, its second edition, and we started the First Holiday Gift Guide. We had some ribbon cuttings, and I think those are important to celebrate new business openings. Those are always a fun way to get the word out. Celebrations catch the media attention, and more people discover downtown. We had the South Lyon High School marching band come out to 115, 117. People would say, "Why would you do that?" Well, because it's the right thing to do. We're noticing more age groups, more people coming downtown. The seniors are making regular trips downtown, visiting the businesses. We're noticing that. We hear from the retailers. We see it in the coffee shop. Young people like to be in the coffee shop of all ages, from one month to 105 years old. People like to be in our coffee shops, and we have great coffee shops throughout the community, not just downtown. So, we supported our high school football team this year with a lot of promotion downtown during the high school playoffs. We got a lot of feedback on that. We hope to work with the new police chief on homecoming parades and kind of bringing some of that tradition back to the downtown this year. Of course, we're always excited to see the Memorial Day Parade tradition downtown. Our different events, the car show, which is a big hit, which will, again, have the Wednesday night car shows, and the all-day Saturday will be back in July. We're always honored that the fire department brings out the giant flag on 9/11 to remember that and commemorate that day, and it's just a solemn remembrance as you see that big flag heading out of or coming into downtown. Pumpkin Fest, of course, our biggest event of the community. Proud to have it downtown. Kids' trick-or-treat the last two years has been a huge success. The Cornstalks downtown last year, we added pumpkins, and we added orange lights, and we had a lot of comments. We'll do that again this year. They added a May Ladies Night Out, which will be repeated, big hit. And then, November 16th, our Ladies Night Out on Deer Hunting Widow Weekend, another big hit, and we've talked about some improvements for that for this year. Shop Small again was a big success on November 25th. We'd like to do more promotion with that, and the more we can do, because that is another big day for local business. Cool Yule had a new chair this year. Again, working with the new chair and our new city manager, new city police chief, and myself, we're going to be more involved and see some expansion plans for Cool Yule this year. But last year was great, how Mike Horlocker, Minister at the Presbyterian Church, stepped in and really picked up the ball. Jeff Heinannan's 55-foot Christmas tree, which turned out to be the third largest in Michigan. Jeff wants the largest this year, but amazing. It was just amazing, and Mother Nature gave... And Mother Nature gave us about a five-minute break. It was bizarre. It was a horrible night. We had a five-minute break where the mist almost stopped and there was the lighting. It was divine intervention. It was a great night. So we'll work on some improvements. That event, we're having discussions now on better integrating it in with Cool Yule, a better flow for the whole evening. Farmers Market Expansion, had a lot of comments about that area that opened up for dining and, or not dining, people can eat and using the extra area, the storage on-site, which has saved money rather than hauling the trailer. So that's been a big plus, our Farmers Market. We have challenges in funding always and finding the right vendors, but we've got some good ideas on new vendors from several people. Some of the council people have said they have new contacts. So our challenge is to continue to make the market better and we're certainly hopeful. We're hopeful of that. So that's really it. Moving forward, that's two good years in a row for downtown and we're looking for a great number three.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Great presentation, Bob. It's unfortunate that the attendees and the public couldn't see it. So Lisa, is it possible to scan this in and include it as the, an attachment with the packet so that people can access it online? Because I mean, it's a good package, Bob. It really kind of sums things up. A lot of progress has been made. And certainly want to thank you and obviously the business owners that put so much into making the city that much better. So great presentation. And like I said, certainly would want the residents to see it as well.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the DDA and all the members, past and present, and City Hall and your support for downtown because it's a team thing. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Bob, I just want to say thank you so much for bending over backwards for everybody in the community. I think the downtown looked absolutely fabulous. I'm still getting compliments on how pretty the downtown looked at Christmas time. And it still looks nice. The lights are still up and, you know.
That's Paul's suggestion for Valentine's Day. That's a Paul Zalnack.
Really?
Leave the red and white lights on for Valentine's Day.
Well, it's working because people just sit back and they say, you know, and I tell everybody. He bent over backwards for everybody and it shows. The results show. And one thing that I wanted to comment about with respect to this is that many of the photographs that are in here, the residents can already see just by going downtown. So even though they're here, please take an opportunity and look at the downtown. I think Bob gave a great outline of the buildings and the areas affected. Go down and take a look at all of this. Walk into these businesses. Many of this you can see just by going downtown. You don't need this, I mean, this is nice, it's handy, but go downtown, spend a couple bucks, walk into the coffee shop. Just doing a good job, Bob. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Kivell.
Yeah, I mean, this is wonderful to chronicle what's been taking place over the last couple of years and all the positive moves forward. Your help has been just remarkably instrumental in pulling this all together, and we can't thank you enough about that. I was wondering, as far as the DDA, is there a sense of when the pop-ups from the properties that had been sold might end up being realized by you guys?
What do you say the pop-ups from properties?
You said there was four buildings sold downtown that...
Well, the four buildings sold would be the Grand Trunk purchased their building from Jerry Suite. The building that is owned by Divine Yoga, the upstairs is available now for office, sold to someone who's not running a business. I don't remember their name. Annie Jeweler's building was bought by Mike Anderson. And then the fourth escapes for you right now. But they're all occupied. Those four are all occupied right now, except for the upstairs of Divine Yoga.
Well, I recognize that, but I mean, their value gets pretty much leveled out to what its real value is now. I was just wondering how long it takes for that to show up.
Actually, it should occur this year with the uncapping of some of those properties.
Great, okay. And as well as the, all the improvements that have taken place, there's got to be some capture realized from that for DDA to be able to take advantage of?
Large-scale improvements, I asked that question specifically of Oakland County Equalization and the large-scale projects, like the hotel, which overall was 2.4 million. And the Good Day Cafe, which was just short of 800,000 when you include the parking lot. So those projects seem to trigger the TIF because they're very large. Just the rehab of an exterior is, I was shocked. I was told that that's minimal, but it certainly helps resale. But those don't really trigger an evaluation. Paul's an assessor, but I think Oakland County Equalization, he would agree that just the facade rehab alone doesn't trigger a major value change.
Well, those two large projects, though, I mean, is there a sense of when that stuff will end up hitting our books?
We'll see those numbers within the next couple of weeks. We'll know the exact dollar amount based upon sales and other methods for determining value through the county.
Outstanding.
Takes about a year.
Uh-huh. That's great. I mean, that'll actually give some good seed money for projects outside of the parking lot now, the cost of that, so.
National School Year.
Yeah. So I mean, that'll be very helpful for you guys to get creative. Thank you.
Councilmember Richards?
Bob, thank you so much for transposing the facts and figures into a dollar and cents explanation that we can all understand. We can all walk around down there, but we haven't the slightest idea, okay, of how much money we're talking about and efforts of the contractors and such. We know it was a lot, okay, but we don't know how, we could never imagine how you put it together, okay? That's all I'm saying. Thank you so much for doing that, okay, because we didn't have that.
Well, we have a great building department that keeps good data, too. Thank them, too. Thank you again.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
And Dan saved the day with the...
Well, I disagree. I couldn't get the projector working, though, so.
Re-try.
I'll get someone on that. All right. At this time, we'll move forward with Old Business Number One and the second reading of the ordinance limiting the use of fireworks.
Mr. Mayor and Council?
Mr. Well?
So I want to quickly highlight why there looks like there's so much more added in here. So Section forty-six, one twenty-one, one twenty-three, and one twenty-seven were not in the first reading, but the changes to those existing sections are relatively minor. The definitions, it adds homemade fireworks and drops out national holiday. The, in one twenty-three, it's really to add the harassing livestock issue and include the authority of the fire chief with respect to the no-burn orders. And one twenty-seven is included to clarify various fines and penalties that are set by statute and match those up to our ordinance.
Are those in our fee schedule then?
No, they're in the ordinance.
Okay.
Question?
Councilmember Richards?
Tim, in this first part of the presentation from last meeting, are we talking about HB fifty-nine forty as the one that, the one in the middle that we're choosing or we're voting on?
So the revised ordinance for second reading includes all three, which were tie-barred, so it's fifty-nine thirty-nine, fifty-nine forty, and fifty-nine forty-one. They all, each one of those bills does different things and they've all been pulled together into the revised ordinance for second reading.
Okay, I didn't understand that. Thank you.
So really, the only thing that didn't change was the limitation on the dates that people can use and discharge fireworks.
Okay. The part about $10 million in insurance, did I read that right? The vendor's got to come up with $10 million in insurance?
I can't speak to that. Really, the locals don't get to regulate the sale of fireworks, so that's really a state requirement. So we don't have any local requirement for that issue. We don't get into that issue at all.
Okay, unless I'm...
Although we will be able to, as of, I believe it's July, after this Fourth of July, we are allowed to regulate the temporary fireworks tents. And we'll be working with planning, fire, and police to figure out what we want to do as far as those particular uses.
Anybody else want to say anything? I want to say something. Okay.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Okay. This is all a very good bill and I'm sure it's going to pass. But I'm going to be the sole dissenting no-vote on this matter.
Mr. Mayor, point of parliamentarian procedure. Generally, what happens in motions is that you make a motion, you get it seconded, and if it doesn't get seconded, it doesn't go anywhere. Robert's Rules is about efficiency in meetings. So you hold your discussion after it's been seconded. So if people want to second this and actually vote on it, then we have a discussion. So I would ask that we follow Robert's Rules. You can discuss it, but just let's make sure we have a motion to discuss.
Councilmember Kivell?
Our past practice hasn't been so verbatim to Robert's Rules, so I don't have any misgiving with the idea of having discussion prior to formalization of a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor?
If I can finish my comment. The, one of the benefits of being able to have some kind of a little cursory discussion prior to a motion is in the event that you end up not completing your thoughts. If something spins off and you forgot some aspect of it, you don't end up having a problem with getting jammed up. You make a motion and all of a sudden you have to rescind that motion and everything. It just helps to get everything out of the way and give clarity to what the motion actually will be in the beginning. So most things, it doesn't drag it out any further than just a minute or so.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you. I move to approve the second reading of the ordinance to amend the City of South Lyon Code of Ordinances, amending Sections forty-six dash one twenty-one through forty-six dash one twenty-three and forty-six one twenty-seven to revise the days and time a person may ignite, discharge, or use consumer fireworks, to include additional restrictions on the discharge of fireworks and to revise the penalties for violations.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
Aye. Could I give my explanation?
You're supposed to do it during the discussion.
Okay, we're over.
Well, if you want to discuss, excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
If you want to discuss something, raise your hand, let the mayor know that you want to participate in the discussion. I mean, that's how it works. That's the efficiency of Robert's Rules. If we're going to, you know, okay, well, you missed the vote.
You're right. I...
So we'll move on to Old Business Number Two. Second reading of an ordinance to amend the City of South Lyon Code of Ordinances, Chapter forty-six, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article Two, Fire Prevention Code, Sections forty-six through thirty-one and forty-six through thirty-two, to adopt the 2015 edition of the International Fire Code.
If you guys have any questions, comments?
All right, thank you. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
I'll make the motion. I move to approve the second reading of the ordinance to amend the City of South Lyon Code of Ordinances, Chapter forty-six, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article Two, Fire Prevention Code, Sections forty-six dash thirty-one and forty-six dash thirty-two, to adopt the 2015 edition of the International Fire Code.
I second.
Discussion then?
Yep, we've got a motion and a second. Who has anything for discussion? Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Just a quick question. I'm sorry, your name again, sir?
Michael Weir.
Michael, Mr. Weir, okay. Where it says on page three, two of three, "Storage of Class One and Two liquids in above-gown storage tanks outside of buildings is prohibited within the city limits," does this apply to people that are grandfathered in?
This will pertain to new construction. This doesn't...
In other words, the oil depot or whatever business that may have been here for years, or he doesn't have to...
Correct, so an old occupancy wouldn't be required to bring it up to the 2015 standards unless they were changing their use of occupancy, so on and so forth. So they would be grandfathered in and would remain under what they were approved, the fire code that they were approved on.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. That's it.
Does anyone else have anything for discussion? Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Just again, as a point of parliamentarian procedure, I did speak with the city manager prior to the meeting. Under consent agendas, we could have put second readings of ordinances under a consent agenda. So I just wanted to let council know about that, that many things can go in that consent agenda. It's just not routine matters, but this could have gone in. Sometimes even bids could go in if it's just a routine matter and you're approving things like that. But, so next time if we have second readings and there's not a whole lot of discussion or changes, this could have been included on the consent agenda, too.
Councilmember Kivell?
My misgiving with something like that is something as substantial as this is. Our meetings are probably the, one of the very few places where the public actually gets an understanding of what decisions we're making on their behalf. So the idea of us taking another minute or two to review what it is that we're actually acting on, I don't think is a huge imposition.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Kurtzwell? I think it's also important to note that in addressing that particular argument is that consent agendas permit you to pull an item off of the agenda.
I understand that.
So if an individual wants an item pulled off of the agenda because you want to provide some additional commentary and you want the public to sort of let them know what your position is, or let them have an opportunity for argument in terms of, you know, the debate that does go on in these ordinances, that freedom is always available in order to ensure the transparency with respect to decision-making with council. So that's always there. It doesn't go away. Thank you.
So we've had a motion and a second. All, excuse me?
Mr. Mayor, who seconded that motion?
Oh, did we not get a second? I thought Carl...
I thought I heard...
I did.
Rose did.
So we have had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Mr. Weir?
Moving on to New Business Number One, DPW Complex Improvements.
Mr. Mayor, as part of the analysis of all the projects that we're doing within the city, I was looking at the 2018-19 budget. We have $175,000 designated for the DPW complex improvements, and that's for specifically paving. As part of that project, after meeting with our engineers and staff, we are recommending that we do a survey and design for installation of storm sewer and paving before we begin with that particular project. So I'm recommending that a portion of the design funds be used in the 2018-9 budget for that particular work. There's a proposal from Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark, and Mike Darga from HRC is here tonight that does outline the topography survey and the site plan development for that complex. So the possible course of action was to approve, disapprove, or postpone the decision. And it is my recommendation that we do, in fact, hire HRC for engineering services for the complex to do the topographic survey and site plan development for this project before we do any paving work. Mike Darga's here to answer any questions that you have also on this.
Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion to hire HRC for engineering services to do a survey and site plan development for the DPW complex.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to discuss.
Second.
Councilmember Perezian, go ahead.
I just saw, I wanted to go off the cuff and indicate that I try to make it to the DPW complex a couple of times a year, and I couldn't be more thrilled that this is out there. This is needed. There's a lot of things that the DPW needs, and this is just one of many. So this has my full support. Thank you for moving this forward.
Excellent. Councilmember Kennedy?
Paul, I'd like to commend you for bringing HRC to look at the effort there because there's more that goes into paving the DPW yard than just throwing cement down arbitrarily. You know, understanding the surface on which you're going to install it will ensure that the investment is made wisely. So I certainly appreciate you going the extra step to look at what we're actually facing before we just spend the money on cementing over the yard. So I would be in favor of having HRC look at it, see exactly what we're up against.
Councilmember Richards?
Mr. Darga, the picture that you provided here, the area I'm familiar with is quite a bit bigger than this, okay? In the event that your engineering estimate rises, okay, in cost... In the event that your engineering estimate rises, okay, in cost, what, would there be a ceiling cap on it? Because this picture, I've walked this, okay? And I can envision some more things that can pop up as far as when the weather permits and everything, and you get a clearer look at things right now. Anyway, I'm just saying, is this a firm figure on this, or is that gonna, if it comes up larger, are we gonna go up another 20,000 or something like that? Can we hold on to this figure?
Well, that's what these numbers are for, and more of a ceiling. I mean, I think we explained in here, we had two review meetings. If they have to have, you know, three or four, price could go up, but this is a pretty good budget for this type of work.
All right.
Councilmember Kirtwell?
Could you talk a little bit about the grading issues or problems that you see in terms of this? I've been over there. The DPW is just one of my favorites. They're just probably one of the hardest-working guys, you know, in the city, especially at two o'clock in the morning when there's ice coming. They're a hard-working crew of individuals, and I just want to make sure that they get absolutely everything that they need. This is, I've been on this for over a year now, the paving. I've been over there walking. I was there in the fall. I was hoping that we could have gotten something done this fall, but obviously it didn't. Can you talk a little bit about drainage and grading in terms of how difficult it's going to be? What is your initial assessment of how this is going to work?
Well, we don't really know that yet. That's what this proposal is for, is to collect information.
Well, you've got a grade. You can see the grade.
Well, yeah, you can see it and go out there and feel it, but I can't tell you exactly what we're gonna do out there. That's what we're collecting the topo for.
What do you do when you have grades of this nature? I mean, do you set drains down at the bottom? Do you put in French drains? How are you...
There'd probably be a storm sewer, so you could run the grade flatter and collect low points for the storm sewer.
So you're gonna raise up some of these grades?
Well, they're, these buildings, you're kind of fixed.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Some of those grades are, you might be stuck with them. Try to, you know...
Mr. Mayor, if I may also just add something to that. The total design of the whole complex is what we really need to look at. We did have money designated within this year's budget to do paving work. It didn't really say how that paving work was going to take place. It didn't mention anything about storm sewer. And after a couple of site visits out there, we could see that there is some grading issues that need to be addressed to make sure that we drain the water properly off-site to the other drainage areas with the creeks that run along the property, or to other storm sewers that run through there. One of the things we need to do is do an analysis and do soil borings on-site to determine what the soils are below surface. There's a lot of area that there could be, you know, twenty, twenty-one double-A gravel. There's a lot of ground asphalt that's on the site. There may be some hard surfaces that are underneath. Because this was a former treatment facility, there are some utilities that are located underground, including a gas line that runs underneath there as well, as well as sanitary sewer line that runs through there also. We need to ensure, based upon where those existing utilities are, that we identify where the best location is for the storm sewer, specifically the drainage coming off-site from the building so we properly traverse that water to the necessary area. So a lot of the survey work is going to be able to determine what the highs and the lows are. We may have to add material in certain areas, take away material in other areas. But this is really the first step to get water away from the building, to get the vehicles into good positions, to get where some of those drying beds are that originally on-site for the treatment facility, and look at where we're putting all the storage and if we need to move any of the storage facilities, whether it's for vehicles or other equipments outside, in the proper location. And really, the survey is really the first step in that, and then having these meetings with our DPW staff to try to determine where the best locations of some of these things are, based upon existing utilities that some of us may not even realize are really underground because they're not marked right now.
What is the strength of the cement? Because we're going to be having huge trucks on this. I mean, what is our wear on this new cement going? Are we talking five years, 10 years?
You'd probably be having an eight-inch, it'd be like a concrete road.
I was gonna ask what the depth was.
It'd be probably eight-inch.
So you're gonna do it just like a road?
It'd be a road, yes.
Okay, I didn't know that. Okay. Okay. And also, just one more question is, what is the timetable on this?
What's the timetable for a starting survey?
We're getting a little bit of rain here. If we have survey crews available and they can get out there, you know, the next couple of weeks, they could get it. But if we get a foot of snow, it might be a month or so. But I would think within two months, we'd be sitting down having a meeting.
So February, March, you've got two months then to do the survey, and then what's next on the timeline?
Then we would, part of this would come up with a cost estimate. So this is probably gonna be done in phases. So we'll probably come up with phase one, phase two, and then if council decides to go forward, look at paving, you know, later in the fall.
Later in the fall?
Yeah.
Okay. So no later than October 1st, or? I'm trying to set a timeline because I want to make sure the project gets done.
I would say before October. You want to, if we're using concrete, you definitely want to have warmer weather when you start getting cold nights, it takes longer to firm up, so.
And part of this will be predicated upon the 2019-2020 budget and what's allocated in that for paving work on this project. Because the money that we have allocated this year was only specifically for the 2018-19 budget, so that most, those dollars would have to be expended by June 30th of this year. So we'd have to allocate additional dollars in the upcoming year budget if we're to do any work after July 1st.
I don't know if any thought has been given to it, but when you look at the picture, I should have gone over there today, but they have these areas in the back of the building where they store vehicles, and I think they wanted to put canopies over them so that they would last a little bit longer, keep them out of the sun, keep them out of the snow. I don't think the canopies are in them. What I don't know is, are the grounds of those dirt or are these cement pads? Because if they're not cement pads, would it be possible to include this as part of the project? I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, there are some cement pads out. There are other areas that are not. That's all will have to be determined once we do the survey.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Kirtwell?
I was just curious, is there likely to be a need for retention?
I would think so, yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's an awful lot of shed, so don't we have in GIS, isn't there some kind of ballpark topo over the area?
No, not, not accurate enough to design on, no.
No, I was just wondering, I mean, you get a trend of where the fall is and what our obstacles will be.
The county has GIS, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And it may not be retention, it may just be detention, detaining the water before it enters as the stream instead of on-site retention that would keep water there at all times. So it just might be a little storage within storm sewer facilities that are basically underneath ground.
A limiter, yeah.
Right. So we potentially, based, like, get this as the money that we have allocated in this year's budget, and we get the survey worked on. We may not get paving done until after the July 1st deadline, but we potentially could be using the dollars to install storm sewer or do other work prior to that paving so we could still use funds from this year's budget besides the amount that you're allocating this evening for the site development and survey work.
Well, I'm all for the site plan and all that kind of business, but clearly, we don't want to end up creating or prolonging a situation where we're dumping silt into the yurkeys. So, you know, that's all, that was just my question. Thank you.
Councilmember Prezian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So based upon your projections, it's going to take you about 234 hours to provide us with an estimate, which is roughly a little bit over five weeks. So if you were going to spend additional time on this, I would personally feel more comfortable, and I'm just one of seven, if you came back to council and asked for additional time, and that way we could allocate more to the budget. Just simply because I anticipate, construction issues usually take longer and they cost money. So if we're thinking it's going to cost about $23,000 now, let's say something comes up, the weather's bad, it's a larger issue than we thought, I personally would like for you to come back and ask us, hey, it's actually going to cost us $15,000 more dollars, just so we have an idea for the budget. That's just my personal preference, though.
We will come back if it's anything more than this. There's no doubt we will do that.
That's exactly what I wanted to know.
We will definitely do that. It exceeds the amount that we're asking for within this proposal.
And this is just the nature of construction. That's just how they usually take, I mean, like, the hotel took longer.
Yeah, and one thing, this is, this is kind of just to come up with a master plan for the facility. It's isn't design, putting a design and plan suspect for paving and stuff. So that's a whole nother proposal.
Okay, great. Because I don't want to lock you into this number, but I also don't want to be flagrant about how much we're spending either.
Sure, yeah.
But with that, if there is no further discussion...
Actually, I would like to ask one more, if I could. Are we giving any consideration to the notion of a modern view of this to reconfigure? I mean, over long-term?
Yes.
Like, as a capital improvement kind of a situation?
Yes, and that's why we're going to have additional meetings with staff based upon the way this works and what's the recommendation. What other sort of improvements should we potentially be looking at in the future on that particular site?
Well, I'd like us to plan so we can capitalize on what's there with the notion that the future will end up being different, that's all.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy?
So Mike, I mean, just, did you have an overall estimate again for the duration on this? I mean, I'm looking at three individuals involved in the survey itself, and the question becomes, are they working in tandem or are they sequential issues?
Yeah.
Is this going to take, I mean, because if they're going to work all at one time, that's a two-week effort. If they're going to work sequentially, it could be five or six weeks.
Correct. Like, the survey crew, that could be two to three people. So, I mean, they're out there, you know, three days in a row, come in, there's a guy processing it. So, yes, there are people working at the same time.
So what is the estimated overall duration of this start-to-finish? Best-case scenario, assuming the weather cooperates?
Probably a month, once the topo is collected. Say it takes a week to collect the topo, I would say it'd take a month to come up with some schematics and cost estimates and meet with the city manager.
Right, the original conversations we had, we looked at, were something around April 1st.
Good. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna try and go back in time here. I believe we had a motion from Councilmember Walton, supported by Councilmember Kirtwell, to hire HRC to engineering services to do a topographic survey and site plan development at the DPW complex. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to new business number two, road commission easements and license for Dixboro Road paving project.
As part of the Dixboro Road paving project between Eight Mile and Nine Mile, which will begin in September 2019 and be completed in 2020, the road commission has requested two temporary easements and a driveway grading easements for small portions of volunteer park along Dixboro Road on the western boundary of the park, which are needed for the projects. The easements and license relates to small portions of the city property and parkland are all temporary and terminate upon completion. The road commission has also asked the city to provide a clearance letter, which is attached regarding the federal funding and potential impact of the city-owned volunteer park. We've attached the temporary easements and driveway grading license, as well as the draft clearance level letter, and there is a course of action. The recommendation is to approve the temporary easements and license and authority and authorize the city to manager to approve Section 4-F clearance letter. There is a recommended motion attached as well.
Councilmember Walton?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to approve and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the temporary easements and driveway grading license on parcels of city-owned property in Volunteer Park for the RCOC Dixboro Project, Road Paving Project, Project Number 53982, and to authorize the city manager to provide RCOC a Section 4-F clearance letter, subject to his final review and approval.
I'll second. Question?
Councilmember Richards?
Mr. Darga, I'm fully in favor of this, but I wanted to make noted that there's one little piece in here that I would hope we could pay special attention to, where it talks about restoring the vegetation to what it originally was, okay? Originally from when, okay? That's my question, okay? The vegetation along there, I'm familiar with it, okay? Some of it, a good deal of it, okay, is an invasive species of swamp weed that's come in here in the last 10 years, okay? You may know the exact name of that species that I'm talking to. It's hybridized and mutated and, or mutated and hybridized. It's all over town. We've got it all over this city and places. And I have personal, my personal experience, I've experimented with weed killers for more than 30 years. And the strongest stuff available to the public that I've been able to purchase, I've never been able to kill it, okay? The stuff the railroads got to wipe it up. But I would hope that in the process of doing this, your company can experiment with something and wipe it out and clean that up because it kills the cattails, it eliminates habitat for birds that eat, and it's worthless and it undoes the habitat and environment, okay? It would be a great benefit if we could start a program to get rid of it and you could find the solution. Thank you very much. That's all I'd say.
Good point.
Anyone else have anything for discussion?
Well, it should be said that that should end up being ancillary to what we're doing now, so.
Yeah. All right, so we have a motion from Councilmember Walton, seconded by Councilmember Kennedy, to approve and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the temporary easements and driveway grading license on parcels of city-owned property in Volunteer Park for the RCOC Dixboro Road paving project, RCOC Project 53982, and to authorize the city manager to provide RCOC a Section 4-F clearance letter, subject to his final review and approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. At this point, we'll move on to the budget this evening. Councilmember Kirtwell?
Paul, I just had a couple of quick questions regarding the budget. I don't know how it's been with other communities, but I was talking to some DDA people in a different city, and I was surprised to learn that their economic development director was paid out of the DDA and not out of the municipality. Now that we are getting the DDA funds, is that something that South Lyon will do, or are we keeping Bob where he is, or? It doesn't make any difference to me. It was just explained to me that the DDA's generally have the, are the ones that have the control over the hiring of the economic development director. In our case, it's the city, so.
In other communities, well, this community specifically is a little bit different because the position is shared not only economic development and DDA. And when a DDA is originally established, there usually isn't enough funds to hire a DDA director. So you have to look at existing city staff to fill that position, not only for purposes for functioning for the city, but also the funds that are needed to fund that position. Right now, there aren't any dollars that are, the dollars are, like you said, coming out of the city funds. I think once the city does have, or the DDA does have more funds and captures more dollars and has the mileage applied to the DDA, then more funds for that position because it is a part economic development director, which is the whole city and the DDA, because technically the only DDA funds can be used are only for projects or for a position that is just specifically designed within the DDA district. We can separate those duties and get funds from the DDA.
Okay. I didn't understand how that worked. Thank you.
Anyone else with anything for the budget this evening? Okay, we'll move on to the manager's report. Paul?
Continuing on, the city is still working within budgets and specific departments. As you saw tonight, we talked about a couple of the projects. One is that Dixboro Road paving project that will be within the 2019-20 budget. It'll be funds that'll be allocated for our particular portion of the paving project and a particular portion where a potential water main and storm sewer will need to be relocated as well. where a potential water main and storm sewer will need to be relocated as well. And also, as we just mentioned, the DPW project, which will include also within the upcoming year's budget. Another item that was included within the 2018-19 budget was the North Hagadorn paving, which, uh, also includes some utility work in that area. That whole subdivision, that area, the sanitary sewer, the underground, uh, needs to be replaced and needs to be repaired. Uh, my recommendation moving forward would be to repair the sanitary sewer, uh, within that area first and then start to work towards the paving project. I would not like to have the paving done within the subdivision and obviously have to rip up sanitary sewer a year or two later when it gets extremely bad or completely, completely fails. So doing sanitary sewer work within the whole subdivision and then follow up with the paving of that project as well. And we'll be coming forth with additional items for other sanitary sewer inspection work that we'll be doing within the city upcoming year in different quadrants of the community. I mentioned something within my manager's report also about partnering with the Salem South Lion District Library regarding a community shred. This is something very inexpensive. We have documents that we need to shred. The community has people that need to shred items, and this is very inexpensive. We have to do it anyways, but we have a, a much larger capacity to do more when we are partnering with the South Lion District, and we think it's a, it's a good partnership for a minimal amount of money to work on that project. Uh, the CBI website, uh, we're meeting with a few staff members and, uh, company regarding updating our city website, as well as looking at the improvements regarding social media. We realize in order to stay up to date and to communicate things with our residents and business owners and the public in general, we need to constantly be on that cutting edge or bleeding edge so we can move forward and provide information to residents and everybody as quickly as possible. People are not necessarily looking online these days, always at a website, social media. Uh, Facebook is used extensively now. People look on that and they know immediately what's going on, whether there's a water main break, whether there's an issue going on within the community. Police are using it. It, it gets out information to the community as quickly as possible. And you look at, you know, ninety percent of the people that are, you know, in, you know, in downtown businesses, in offices, students in schools, people are using their cell phones for all kinds of things. And we think this is going to be a great way moving, a good, good thing moving forward. Uh, as part of the upcoming budget, uh, with working with the water department and analyzing our system and how we read, read meters, we're looking at the process of starting to replace meters. We have numerous meters that are failing with the changing technology, looking at using new technology and investment to better serve our residents, to go towards a reading that is done through cellular, providing instant readings where nobody actually has to go out and read, read the meters. That can actually be done within the office. The public can actually read their own meters. They're on vacation. They can find out if they have a leak, fifteen-minute intervals. We'll, we'll be able to tell if there's excessive use, uh, other breaks or something potentially in the home for excessive reads. You know, the wear and tear of equipment, the new meter reading equipment that will not be needed because everything will be done in-house and be done online. We think it's a good step up for technology and something that the technology is moving forward and will be coming forward, you know, later on with a, a long-term plan for doing something like that throughout the whole city. As Bob did mention regarding the lights in downtown, we had, did have discussions regarding keeping some lights. We thought for a week for Valentine's Day that we'd keep them on and they'd be running through all next weekend, uh, in order for the, uh, to be a little bit more festive within the downtown. And that's all I have. If you have to answer any questions, it's your behalf.
Councilmember Friesian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Paul, have, do we have a Twitter account?
No, we do not.
Okay, that might be an option as well, just because
I agree.
With social media being so mainstream and everything is usually going through either Facebook, Twitter, that's, that might be the way we go.
I agree.
Councilmember Kilt?
Um, just to kind of piggyback on that, isn't Twitter much more labor-intensive where you're, you have to man it more than, a Facebook account seems like it's a little bit more passive, where you can install information, but you don't have to chronically be, you know, inter, interacting with it, with it.
Well, Facebook page, you have to continue, or you want to continually update. Twitter immediately gets things out to the public, just like Facebook does, but there is a group of population that uses Twitter extensively to be able to find out information. So we think both of those will help with, with our
I don't have Twitter, so I don't really know anything about it. So it just disperses information. It's not a back-and-forth communication?
Right. Within a limited amount of characters, gets information out to the public, and I'd be willing to bet students within this off, or within the auditorium right now, if you ask them, I'd probably say seventy-five percent of them are using Twitter on a regular basis.
Yeah, okay. And further, uh, is there an interest in getting the functionality of being able to do searches for information on the website, an improvement to that? Because it's pretty clumsy right now.
Yes. And also combining departments also, because the police department had their separate page, fire department had their separate page, city had their separate page. Be able to combine all these things together for not only Facebook and the other, or, uh, social media and, you know, for people to be able to access a website and be able to obtain all the information at once instead of have to search, where am I worth, what's the police department under, what's the fire department under, where do I get this information?
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Walton?
You actually just touched on a question I had. If you're going to combine all the departments into one page, who's going to control it?
Well, each one will be able to combine their, will be able to control their own specific area, but it will be housed either a search for under South Lion Police Department or City of South Lion. Either one of those could potentially bring you to the police department, but the police department controls theirs, fire department controls theirs, and then city controls ours as well. Because right now, they are separate. Each one controls their own, but creating some sort of unified look, which, um, we do have input with each other, and when we meet with, uh, prospective companies to do this, that's the main focus, that it looks uniform. So we are one city, we are one unit, even though we are getting out different, uh, media or different pieces of information to, uh, different entities.
Right. And so any, and anyone or everyone can access and post out there?
There won't be anybody and everybody. I mean, we'll have specific, uh, regulations within our own departments, and those are the things that we will be working with the company.
Okay.
Councilmember Kurtswell?
I want to go to the issue of paving Hagadorn.
Oh, sure.
Uh, I just wanted to let you know that several years ago, before I got on council, there was a question about, uh, paving some of the subdivisions. And the response at that time by the city manager was, well, we don't have the money. We'll have to set up a special assessment district and just put it on your property taxes. It, I don't care which way this goes. I just want to make sure that if the Hagadorn area gets done at the city's expense, that we don't change the rules. And when other areas of the city, like some of the subdivisions, whose roads also need to start getting done, all of a sudden, we don't change our tune and say, well, we're going to set up a special assessment district for you. So I just want to make sure whatever plan is used to finance, uh, the paving of Hagadorn, uh, at some point, that that process be uniformly applied throughout the city.
And, and that's a good point. And council will, you know, definitely have to review that. Council had already made a decision, though, to pave Hagadorn Road and to do that particular, uh, section and over other sections within the city. Um, it appeared to me in reviewing that information, that city council made a conscious, conscious decision to move forward because that was one, a specific area that must have been the worst within the city to move forward. And I think it's in the best interest is to, um, not pave, or to pave areas that are connected to Hagadorn first, prior to paving a road, instead of having, you know, to rip it up and do, um, sanitary sewer work after, um, which will come with a sanitary sewer analysis determined of how much we're going to actually take on in the future, how much sanitary sewer needs to be repaid, repaved or, uh, put in, or water mains that need to be put in. But to, uh, not pave the main street first and then have, uh, the outer streets done later and have all that construction equipment go over that newly paved road. Um, so it, and, and maybe my assumption was wrong, that const, council made the decision that that was the most important road to pave.
No, I, I'm, I'm not disputing with the priority. That's, that's not the issue.
I know, but the point I was trying to make was that that road was used to, that pavement was, uh, or that road was to be used for, with capital funds. So that was council's decision that the city was going to take that on with use of those tax dollars. If you want to go to SAD, we can definitely start looking at that and halt that paving project.
No.
But that, so I, I was going to treat everybody in Hagadorn and everybody in that subdivision the same way. And yes, we have to determine a long-term need and method for paving all our roads. Uh...
Well, I just don't want certain people to have the advantage of having their roads in their subdivision paid for out of capital improvement funds. And then when it comes to the subdivisions, all of a sudden, now we're going to change the rules. That's all I'm saying, is I'm just
What are you saying?
I, I don't care when roads get done. I don't, I'm not arguing for any priority. What I'm asking for is fairness. It's yet, whatever's used for Hagadorn, if we're going to use capital improvement monies, unless you get a unanimous consent from the people in that subdivision, that they would agree to bump themselves up on the chart and be willing to take an SAD in order to do it, then I think they, we wait in line until their turn comes up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Richards?
Uh, Paul, on Hagadorn, at one point in time, Hagadorn Court up on the north end was in the township. It, uh, wasn't, I don't know if it was connected to Santa City sewer system or not, but has that been looked at as a connecting with the main, the main line of Hagadorn Street, and now, now we find out it needs to all be replaced? I didn't know that.
The majority of it within that subdivision needs to be replaced based upon a study that was done several years ago, where they TV'd the lines within the subdivision, as well as areas to the east of there, towards, uh, Pineak Trail and north towards the railroad tracks. There are certain segments that need to be replaced very quickly. And I believe there is a section there that is not on the sanitary sewer, is not on the sanitary system. And I believe we had discussions with our engineers from HRC, which I don't think they're here anymore. Um, so that was brought up. We did discuss that.
Okay, all right.
Councilmember Kilt?
The, I, I would like us to give some consideration to the notion of, much to Maggie's point, trying to project what our likely strongest position would end up being. You could end up doing an SAD on the underground where, because there's plenty of places in the city that their underground infrastructure is still robust and sound. So then you're only dealing with the road. If we're considering the notion of being the providers of new surfaces
Yeah.
And let them decide whether or not, you know, the, the people that have underground issues, if they wanted to incur the cost of the underground, then there would be relative parity throughout the entire community. So, uh, it might end up being something we want to take a look at.
Yeah, and, and part of this process was more towards unified work within that area, and not only just paving, but sanitary sewer and storm sewer. To do survey, we have money that has already been set aside to, you know, start to do work, because you have to do survey work before you're going to do any paving work. Before you do any paving work, you should also look what the, in, in, some infrastructure is below the ground, as well as some of the storm sewer, because, because we have a lot of, um, uneven areas in there where drainage actually occurs, just goes across people's property. It's not pitched correctly. The road isn't in good condition. A, um, non-pervious surface of a road has turned into a pervious surface because there's so many cracks that are in the road. Uh, but there's a lot of work that we need to do, and part of this survey work is going to help us determine that. I may be coming forth at a later date and saying, hey, you know, you allocated, you know, potentially a million dollars to do some of this work. It may take three million dollars now, and council's going to have to make a conscious decision. Do we in fact decide, as you mentioned, go with an SAD, or is the city going to take on this whole project on their own based upon the capital improvement funds?
Well...
So it's not a totally clear picture, other than I want to get a clear picture on how much work needs to be done in that area before anybody starts paving any road.
Well, and knowing the two components, what, what is necessary for the underground cost-wise, and what is the actual paving likely to end up being, have things broken down as clearly as we can possibly get so that we could make some educated decisions on what, what a future review of anybody's failing paving would be. Um, maybe it, it is something that we can bear the cost of paving, just simply not doing the infrastructure underground all the time. Because that's, that's where
That's the cost.
The real costs come in.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Thanks, Paul.
That's a good point.
Does anyone else have anything for manager's report?
No, thank you.
Okay. Uh, at this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Please state your name and address. We will close public comment and move on to council comments. Uh, Councilmember Kurtswell, why don't you kick us off tonight?
I'm just gonna make it short. I'm gonna, thoughts and prayers are with the family of the worker at Michigan Seamless Tool. Thank all of us. Spend a long weekend and our hearts just aed for, for him, uh, for his family. Uh, thank you, God, for taking, taking your son up as quick as you did. Thank you very much. His suffering is over with. God bless him and his family. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtswell. Councilmember Kivell?
Um, much on that same note, um, I'd like to also extend that, that blessing to all of our first responders that had to have been a very uncomfortable position to be in trying to save someone that had endured that, that horrible event. So, um, hopefully, if, if anyone ends up getting to a point where they feel as though they need some, someone to talk to, uh, reach out to, to city manager and see if we might be able to assist in, in some of that stuff. Um, I'd, I'd also like to compliment and, and congratulate the, the three officers that ascended, um, Chief Sovick, Lieutenant Baki, and, and Sergeant Witwrock. Three great guys. Um, I, I, I mean, it's easy to see how they ascended to those positions of leadership, so. Uh, and finally, the, the fact that Chief Collins had sort of set up this whole thing, being able to recognize the talent that would ultimately move into the leadership positions of our community, to be able to keep things stable and perform in a manner that will very likely keep us in the top five safest cities in the state for quite some time to come. So I just wanted to say congratulations again to all three of you. That's terrific. Terrific for you, I'm sure, because your careers are being realized to what you probably had envisioned when you came on board. And great for us because we've got such a, a sound, stable, well-disciplined, uh, outfit in your, your department. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Kivell. Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just have a few things tonight. I want to say a happy belated birthday to Kay. A hundred and five is certainly something very special to celebrate. Salem, uh, South Lion Library and Imagine Theaters have teamed up to bring us Monday movie nights in 2019. And on March 4th, April 1st, and May 6th, if you show your library card, you can get in for eight dollars. Uh, and along with your ticket to the movie, you get an event-sized popcorn. So that's kind of a neat thing they've done. Um, a little different from reading, but hey, why not? Maybe you can get some subtitles in there. Um, I just want to give a couple of shout-outs. Centennial Middle School, who did their annual penny wars, and they raised three thousand dollars for blessings in a backpack. This will feed the students that receive the blessings in a backpack from the middle school for an entire year. So that's pretty amazing for these kids. The other thing is, uh, PAC 200, uh, 236, uh, they collected six hundred and fifteen pounds of food for our friends over there at Act of Faith. So again, thank you so much for helping your fellow neighbors in need. Uh, the Super Bowl of Caring that was held at the First Presbyterian Church also delivered food and money over to Act of Faith. Um, that was brought over by Lauren Horlocker and Lily Mueller. So again, we, we are just really looking out for our neighbors, which is pretty amazing. Um, and I also want to thank the First Presbyterian Church for opening their doors during the polar vortex. And they don't have overnight accommodations, but they offered heat, water, a place for kids to play, and as they told me, a really good cup of coffee. So just want to thank them for being so kind and caring and always looking out for their fellows. Um, they also put out a food locker outside their church for those in need. You know, a place where you can drop off food or collect food if you need it. So just, just, uh, remember to take care of your fellow, um, neighbors, friends, family. There's always a food drop-off within the food, um, grocery stores here in town that goes right to Act of Faith. So I again encourage everyone to buy an extra can or two and drop it in there when you're walking out the store. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Councilmember Friesian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, a couple of things I have. Uh, the South Lion Educational Foundation is hosting their first fashion show fundraiser, and that's going to be on February 23rd at Lion Oaks Golf Course. Um, there's going to be appetizers, dinner, and desserts, and the fashion show is going to be featuring South Lion Community School teachers. Um, all of the proceeds to this will be going to South Lion Community Schools. So if you purchase your tickets, you can do so here. You can do so at Coral Sash, and that's where all the fashion is actually going to be coming from is Coral Sash. And you can also purchase your tickets online. So if you can, buy a ticket and it goes back to our school system. Um, I also wanted to make mention of the South Lion Police Department Annual Report. I thought it was very well organized. I thought it was visually just fantastic. And I thought it was a very, very kind gesture that, um, you included our former council member Harvey Waddell. That is Waddell. That is an excellent gesture, and I just thought it was really well done. And lastly, thoughts and prayers go out to the family of the Michigan Seamless Tube worker. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Friesian. Councilmember Richards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to say ditto with all sincerity on everything everybody has said in my comments previously here. I just want to mention a few things here on a positive note. I have to believe that all of us have put our best efforts forward in submitting our recommendations for the budget. Last December was our deadline, and then we made some additions through the next 30 days, okay? And I know I did, and I'm sure all the rest of us did too. And from here on in, I plan to step back and let Paul be the sole charge of everything and come up with a plan that works, that we haven't been able to come up with in over 10 years or more. Anyway, moving on. This is Black History Month, and we have a wonderful program coming up at the Wishes Hat Museum, the 19th, and it happens to revolve... be up directly regarding the 92 years of the tube mills in this town. And I encourage everybody out there that wants to come to let us know that you're going to come in advance, and hopefully, we'll have a very good turnout. Larry did this presentation six years ago, and he had about 60 people. I hope the weather is good for us also. Also, just in conjunction with Black History Month, this is one of the months of the year when I work on my own historical projects at my house, okay? And I... For those of you that are older, kids wouldn't be interested in this, but since you can't get out and do a lot of things in this kind of weather, you might as well dig into your archives and work on some of your historical stuff, and then put it away for the rest of the year if necessary. Going on down here, later on this spring, as we move forward, I will be bringing the results of my research into futuristic concepts that are going to play out in the next 20 years, after I'm not here, and most of the rest of us aren't here either. But I'm going to be putting it together, and I'll present it to you. I may do it in writing. Okay, next, moving on. Tomorrow is Lincoln's birthday. This is all... These are all for the children more, or the young people, basically. In school, we used to celebrate Lincoln's birthday and write up little things about it when I was a kid. I don't imagine they do much of that today, but it was always something to remember. Also, a good note for... that the kids are always interested in is tomorrow's opening day for Tigers Training Camp in Lakeland, Florida, and the boys of summer will be coming back, and everybody will be thinking forward about what a wonderful sports team we're going to have. And next on down for the kids' enjoyment, I want to let you know that our Rice Ice Rink on the end of the street, right here in front of us, has been very successful through this winter and has had a lot of use by a lot of children, or young people, and a fair amount of adults. And, baby, that's a good thing. It started out kind of slow last year, and this year it's really took off. And finally, Happy Valentine's Day coming up.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity just to follow on to what Councilmember Kivel already brought up. I'd like to recognize the three officers and their promotions. These are three outstanding individuals, and the promotions are well-deserved. I'd also like to acknowledge and recognize Deputy Chief Weir, Chief Vogel, Chief Sovick, and their respective departments for reacting to that tragedy at Michigan Seamless Tube. That is not an easy event to have to react to and to see and to be part of, and I commend your people for their actions and their support of a very difficult situation. Not easy. I'd also like to recognize the efforts of the DPW over the past several weeks, keeping those streets clean, and in all their efforts. It's been mentioned that they were out there at 2:00 in the morning, and they were out there more than just then. I mean, they did a great job of making sure that the streets were clean, the residents were able to get out of their houses and get to work. And along the same lines, I'd also like to remind the residents and business owners that there is an ordinance in the city that the sidewalks do have to be cleared within 24 hours of the end of that snowfall, so that the residents can make their way throughout the city. It's to everyone's benefit to adhere to that. Finally, I'd like to just highlight something coming up at the Salem South Lyon District Library. The Friends of the Library is conducting their book sale coming up March 4th to March 10th, and I believe the books are going to be selling for a half-off. So please make a point to get down to the library and help support the Friends and their efforts to support that fine institution. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. I would also like to echo the thoughts from other councilmembers on the employee at the Michigan Seamless Tube incident, and thank you to our first responders. As all have said, it could not have been an easy incident to be working on, so... And also, yeah, if there's anything needed for those responders, to please let us know, and we'll get on that. I also wanted to quickly thank Linda Robinson and Linda Graham for their efforts on the Cultural Arts Commission. And with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?